I'm sure, yeah.
Dan, look on perfection.
He is. Okay, Brianna, we're ready. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and those of you attending virtually. Welcome to the City of Lakewood's State Legislative Delegation meeting for this Tuesday, November twenty nine, two thousand and twenty-two. We're very excited to have all of you here. This is probably one of the first opportunities in the last two years where we've met post-COVID, so it's just really wonderful to see you all. Thank you for taking the time to meet with us tonight. We all take pride collectively in serving the residents here in the community. We're certainly eager to work with you in addressing the various challenges that we believe are significant in terms of our joint constituents. Over the last biennium, your leadership on behalf of the City of Lakewood has resulted in significant investments in our parks, including American Lake Park, Woods Lake Park, and the expansion of services to individuals experiencing homelessness. We also appreciate the fact that you secured funding for a multimodal transportation study to consider alternative modes of transportation between North Hurston and South Pierce Counties. We're very proud of the work we collectively have done to date, but we all understand that there's certainly more work to do and you're engaged in a new legislative session that will, I assume, be quite busy. Our plan tonight is to share a brief description of each of the city's top priorities for the upcoming session that's been provided to you in our legislative policy manual. I believe a copy has been provided to each one of you. The format is for each of our council members to briefly describe each of the city's top priorities for the upcoming session and then to provide an opportunity for all of us for discussion and questions on each before we move on to the next one. So in the packet in front of you, you're certainly welcome to follow along with the one pager for each of our top priorities, and we've also included our state policy manual, which we won't be reviewing in depth tonight, but it's intended to serve as a reference for you during the upcoming session. So if questions do arise about where the City of Lakewood may stand on a particular item or issue, you certainly can refer to that as well as our esteemed consultants and lobbyists with Shelley Holder here tonight. And again, we want to thank you very much for coming. It's really wonderful to see all of you. We appreciate your attendance and certainly your service on behalf of our residents. So with that, I will start with our Deputy Mayor Mary Moss. We'll discuss the partnership opportunity with the Nisqually Indian Tribe on Fort Stillcom Park improvements. Deputy Mayor.
Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you, Deputy Mayor Moss, Deputy Mayor Moss. You change your name. I want to start by saying thank you all very much for your support and the efforts to improve our Fort Stillcom Park. It is a treasure for our community, and I hope you've had some opportunities to to join us in some of the events that happen in our park. We are thrilled with the improvements made to date and have ambitious plans of moving forward. This coming season, we are partnering with the Nisqually Indians, the Indian tribe, and to request two hundred and fifty thousand dollars toward culture and historical improvement at our parks. The improvements will include signage, art interpretive information throughout the park that will provide an instruction to the Nisqually people and the Chief Leshaw's legacy. We are excited about the partnership with the tribe and eager for the community to have more opportunities to learn about the Nisqually people and their impact on our region. This would be a capital budget request, and we'd be looking to the twenty-eighth district legislators to take the lead with the support. So are there any questions? We want to appreciate, we say that how much we appreciate all you do to support our Sayre Lakewood, so thank you very much. And at this point.
And that's a fascinating project. We've worked long and hard with the Nisqually tribe and have really made great inroads in getting together more frequently. Our Parks Director, Mary Gosworth, who probably know Mary, has done a great job of partnering with the tribe on the cultural side and working with them to create this legislative ask, so we're looking forward to that very much. The next is the LASSA Affordable Housing Project. Many of you are familiar with where we are with LASSA. But first, we want to certainly recognize Representative Mari Levitt. Thank you for coming. We waited as as long as we could, so you didn't miss much, so thank you.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. No, no, you're absolutely fine.
Feed kids and pass off. I met him at a free lot down the street. My husband had enough kids, so there you go.
They're all good. You came at the perfect time. So for an overview of the LASSA Affordable Housing Project, we'll have Councilmember Bokey kind of lead us through where we are and what the ask is.
Thank you, Mayor. Living Access Support Alliance, or LASSA, as it's commonly known as, is headquartered here in our community. They're just right up the street here on Gravelly Lake Drive. They provide emergency housing, rapid rehousing, transitional housing, and case management services. LASSA is the sole provider of these services in the city, and they are planning to construct twenty-five affordable low and lower-income housing units on their Lakewood property, and I think, I think last night we were looking at it was fifty percent AMI and below. This development is phase three of a multi-phase development. Phase two is currently underway and includes renovation of the Client Services Center, which includes access to laundry facilities, showers, bathrooms, and basic hygiene for those experiencing homelessness. We were also provided several years ago, I don't know what's going on, ten years when they did phase one and they added some some, they built their new building there, and then now they've had the build out of the Client Services Center. Where this project differs from most others is it seeks to bring together the need for development of affordable housing with the need to provide ongoing services and access to basic hygiene for individuals experiencing homelessness in a one-stop facility. Once completed, the project could feasibly move a family from a state of homelessness through case management provision of basic services into permanent affordable housing. The Pierce County has already committed three and a half million dollars to the project, and LASSA is waiting to hear if they will receive a housing trust fund award. I don't know when the timing on that is, but we were just discussing that the other night. As part of the biennial budget process, the city is currently considering what level investment it will make toward the project. On behalf of LASSA, we are requesting five hundred thousand dollars from the state capital budget to help make this project a reality. I would note that they already own the land. It's the two houses next door to where they were or where they are now, and it's so it's adjacent property that they have already owned. And I believe that the city gave them some, some funding to be able to do that, so hopefully that project will be on track in the next couple of years for twenty-five units.
A significant project, as we understand it, I think the the total funding request from LASSA for this phase of the project is close to eleven and a half million. And they have secured a fair chunk of that, perhaps up to a third with the county's pledge. And the City of Lakewood is currently reviewing our own opportunities using some ARPA funds to help facilitate that as well. So this is an ask that will help us get LASSA closer to the hurdle. As Councilmember Bokey indicated, the property that they purchased adjacent to their current facility was purchased primarily with city CDPG funds. I believe we allocated upwards of six hundred thousand. I'm looking at the city manager, I think it was between five and six hundred thousand for the acquisition of those properties, so we're very much in support of their mission here in Lakewood. It's an important one, and we certainly appreciate your opportunity for consideration.
And I, and I believe their housing trust fund request is four point four million, right? So along with the county's three and a half, which I think is coming out of their ARPA funds with for an eleven and a half million dollar project, so you get the, the gap they need to close.
Are we allowed to ask questions?
Absolutely.
So the, the, the four point four million will be housing trust funds, separate from the county. And then when will the city know what your contribution will be?
So I think we're going to have an extended study session. We started last night, had a conversation about our initial tranche of ARPA funds. There's some additional questions we have on this particular ask, because we went out with RFPs for capital. And I think we will make a decision on our level of funding probably before the, the end of the year, the fiscal year here. As you know, we have until two thousand and twenty-four to allocate and obligate funds, and then we have till the end of two thousand and twenty-six to expend the ARPA funds. So certainly, we're in that.
One of the things that the Chair of capital budget often talks about is, is multi-jurisdictional commitment, and so if you know that as you do the application, that would be beneficial. If you don't, it may hurt the project, so the more you know, the better it is. The other thing I will say, and I love the Nisqually projects, as you know, as you all know, I love that. I've heard as a member of the capital budget the last four years, I've heard from the Chair, there's not going to be a lot of capital budget dollars this year. And you may have heard that already, but every time I see him, he keeps reiterating that, and I don't know if it's just to me, because I ask for a lot, but or if it's just universal, I'm guessing it's universal, but just know that there's not going to be a lot of capital budget dollars this year, so the more that we can show the partnerships and the variety of different areas that are kicking in dollars, if you will, I think it'll have a stronger, stronger case to be made to potentially have, you know, ability to get funded.
No, absolutely.
Do you want questions now?
Yes, sir. On this particular item, I don't know, it'd be great.
I have a question about the four point four housing trust money. Question I'm going to get is, why do we need an extra half million? Because our budget writers really put dollars into the trust fund. And, and, you know, they look upon that as the fund for low-income housing projects, and now we're going to ask for another half. I'm just wondering to know how, what is that one half? What is it for? Because.
Yeah, well, the simple but not so simple answer is it's for capital. It's for the construction of the facility, obviously. That's what the housing trust fund is for as well. I think they're looking at levels of support. The housing trust fund, obviously, is one. The thought was, if there's some available capital funds, this would be a timely and topical ask, because housing is important, obviously, for the community, for all of our communities.
I know our caucus has made a book, Affordable Housing.
Absolutely, yeah.
Even though I haven't seen what the capital budget's going to look like, usually this year is a decent capital budget, because we're into the big year of the capital budget, so the last two years ago was three billion dollars. I don't know what it's going to be this year, but probably less than that, but I think there'll be dollars toward affordable housing. And the only question I had on affordability is that, you know, twelve ninety-five, I'm just going to raise an issue here. Probably be talking about this a lot in Olympia. Is twelve ninety-five affordable? I mean, you're, we're trying to link this with homeless people. Twelve ninety-five relies upon a person that has a decent salary. A decent, and, and, and I just, you know, I know the, the housing people, many of the housing is coming in at twelve ninety-five, thirteen hundred dollar level. That's, and Tacoma has a horrible housing project at the same level, but I just got a question, everyone here on the affordability. But let's not call it affordable. It's really middle-class housing. And it really isn't going to help the homeless.
Well, I think the chart here is just to reflect the rent prices in Lakewood at that level. I don't think it's what LASSA is going to be charging the clients.
Yeah. I, I would hope that in our work with these developers, that we can get them to help us with that affordability. Because, because I, you know, I, we need middle-class housing, that's true. But, you know, when we try to call this affordable housing, I just, I mean, you have to have forty-five thousand dollar income to play for twelve ninety-five on rent. And then you're going to have a roommate, so you have two incomes in a household. I mean, just think about it, twelve ninety-five a month. Somebody said, I know we pay for property at sixteen hundred dollars a month, et cetera, but, or even higher. But I just want to raise the issue of affordability here, because I think.
It's absolutely critical.
This seems to me that we just need to, part of the homeless crisis in our community is being driven by the lack of affordable housing. Seniors who are caught on social security income probably are not going to be putting a third of their income, twelve ninety-five. Is that for seniors living on social security, I doubt it.
Mayor, to Senator Conway's point, although I think we have a disagreement of how much dollars are in capital budget based on the two chairs, so we'll see what happens. But have you, have the city council talked about House Bill fifteen ninety and whether you're going to levy a housing tax or contemplating that for affordable housing?
It has not been an issue that has been on our agenda for discussion. It's not because of a lack of interest in affordable housing. It's just not one that we have yet tackled in terms of taxation in the city. You know, we're really trying to utilize the resources we have, especially these ARPA funds. They're one-time monies that are dedicated, we believe, most effectively toward capital investments like this, which is a one-time opportunity. And because of the issues with affordability, not just in Lakewood, but in South Pierce County, as we all know, this is a unique project that will at least address the needs for twenty-five units that will be available for the low to lower-income housing folks, but you're absolutely right. I mean, I've got a college kid. Graduated from college. She makes about forty-five thousand, and it's very difficult for a person who's making a reasonable income, the college grad, to live on their own at fifteen hundred dollars a month, when you've got a car payment, medical insurance, you know, the whole thing. It's really, really hard. So other tools, other than this project, we actually did some work reviewing last night, another housing project in the City of Lakewood that's taken advantage of the multifamily tax credit. So they're dedicating twenty percent of the units for the low-income or more affordable housing, so it's a tool in the toolbox. As you know, we're kind of re-reviewing all of the tools available through the Sound Housing and Affordability Partnership that we're a member of, so the SHAPE work plan that Councilmember Farmer's been working on as our designated representative is seeking sort of regional solutions and perhaps enhanced or better tools to address the affordable housing needs and opportunities outside of what is truly a, I don't want to say government project, but it is kind of a government project. The LASSA project is a project that has to be funded by government or private donations to make it flow, because the private market can't as well. Absolutely.
Is, I have two question here. Is this project, seems like it's modeled off of Tyler Square in Tacoma. Is that what we're kind of looking at in this emergency housing?
It's not emergency housing. This one won't be.
It's more transitional?
It's going to be more probably permanent housing, yeah. Permanent housing.
So that Tyler Square model is kind of built that way as well with the townhomes or whatnot? Is that kind of what we're modeling on?
Yes, similar to that. I think it's more apartment-style than townhomes on this particular facility. But I have not been to Tyler Square, but definitely it's going to be more permanent-supported housing. It's not going to be transitional housing. That's, you know, the verbiage has changed over the years of what it is, but it's permanent housing.
So if I can just do a follow-up.
Certainly.
So on Representative Levitt's point here, with less dollars, as you know, we're still in recovery from all of what went on in the last two years during COVID, so we're going to be in a recovery mode. But I, I think I did look through your packet that you do support the middle housing. So I'm kind of wondering, kind of what Representative Levitt is saying, have you been partnering with anyone else in the community that could help alleviate some of the funds that you're requesting from us? So for instance, like the housing authorities? Right? Or even how did Tyler Square, where they get their funding from, just using them as a model on how do you get to this place where, to fill a void here? The truth of the matter is, you do have a void in Lakewood.
Right.
And they get pushed over to my community over in Parkland and Stanaway, where there really isn't any resource. We don't have a LASSA
Right.
over there. So I think it really boos our community, especially the twenty-nine, to work with LASSA, and I've spoken to LASSA before. I've worked with them over twenty years ago, too, to where it's beneficial to both communities.
Absolutely.
You have twenty-five beds. Does that mean you're only going to take residents from Lakewood? Or can Parkland-Sanaway residents also utilize these beds as well?
That's a good question. I don't know what Jan Hutchins would tell you on that. You probably had a conversation with her, but you know, I think they take the applications in and they try to serve who best qualifies for the beds. You know, the issue with phase two, which is going to be the hygiene center that they're building currently, that's going to be for room members on the street that has that need. So whether they perhaps come from the Parkland-Sanaway area to avail themselves, I'm sure it's open for that. But certainly, geographically located here in Lakewood, it's going to service those folks that are certainly closer in proximity to them. It is on a transit route, as you know, over there with Pierce Transit, and so it does provide some access, for sure. But, you know, all of us are grappling with how to cobble together regional solutions to housing. Again, last night, we discussed contributing part of our ARPA funds to the Pierce County project, the Pierce County Village project. So we're committing at least a million to that, which is, you know, again, early gestation, right? And we're hoping that it works. Yeah, we get it. But we're, we're trying to be a partner in that, and I think on, was it the fourteen oh six monies as well? Some of the housing monies that we're, we get a little bit every year, and we're trying to put those together for you know, senior housing and affordability to make sure that those homes that they live in are maintained, because we don't have a lot of money to leverage with that, but it's a little bit. Yeah, and the CDPG monies we utilize. Yeah, and the CDPG monies we utilize, uh, and that's what helped purchase the land for Lhasa. So we do what we can. And the SHAPE tools, maybe Ms. Farmer can speak to what the work plan is just briefly. If you haven't had a chance to review it, you can briefly talk about what we're trying to do with SHAPE in terms of enhancing the tools for all of us in the region to facilitate more and better housing, both at the affordable and the middle levels.
I think the, the tools that, that SHAPE is pulling together are, are trying to find what has worked in other communities and pulling together a set of model tools and policies that then particularly are small, smaller and more rural communities that don't have the staffing levels of, say, Lakewood, um, can kind of make a turnkey, turnkey package and turn around and make those work in their, in their neighborhoods. Um, and that, the work plan will be voted on in January. So it's, and there's, there's still a little ways to go in, in pulling that package together. But the, the goal is to try and see regionally what, what is working. Um, but to Representative Levitt's point, the, you know, if we have the ability to, to raise funds in, in an area that is something that we should look at. But it's also not something that, I'll be honest, it's not something that people want to talk about, particularly elected officials, when it comes to, comes to that raising revenues through taxes. And so, um, I think we're trying to exhaust all other options first, um, before we, we go that route. Um, we do, one of the things that I really appreciated about the work that, that Lakewood has done in the housing area is that, um, with the rental housing safety program and with our CDPG and home funds, we have really, uh, over the years, spent a lot of time trying to keep people in their homes that, and, and keep these homes with working water heaters and, and steps and ADA accessibility. And so that we, we're not displacing folks. And so we've done a lot of renovations so we can keep people in their, in their homes. And so that, that goes a long way. It's not creating new homes, but it's keeping people in their homes. And that, that is one of the things that, that Lakewood is a little bit known for.
Councilmember Branstadter?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I guess that I would say that the fact that in our packet this year, why there's an ask for Lhasa is, um, we are sort of in the service desert of the people who are really willing to build permanent housing for really low-income people, uh, and not have to put it in a way that, 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 that in, in the profit-based development piece to do that. And Lhasa has been the, really the single entity um, in Lakewood that has worked with us and has built some already. Uh, works with people to help them find things that are not Lhasa-owned. Um, and as Councilmember Bokey said, this is Phase Three of a five-phase plan where they have assembled property. They already have the real estate for, uh, you know, you know, all the way up to five to be able to go and do that. But they're trying to deal with this in a manageable way. And, um, yeah. They are the organization that is on the ground here in Lakewood. So that's why we're looking to support. And we want to make sure that there's, continues to be some momentum with their five-phase plan, you know, that it doesn't, doesn't stop. Well, you know, um, we're the why the five hun, this five hundred thousand? It's, uh, we're trying to avoid using calculus to get it to all add up and come up with the right number. Although the, coming up with the number is really, um, you know, it, it, it's really Lhasa's, uh, need, it has, has come up with their estimate to be able to go and do that. Uh, they have asked us to ask you and we're perfectly willing, willing to do that. Um, you know, because we think that, 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 that they're reputable and that it's not twenty-five beds, it's twenty-five families. Um, so it's, um, um, goes on and on. Now, um, so, so that, that, that's sort of why it's, it's, it's on our list. And the fact that it's up in our, in our, in our top five is an indicator of our accept, agreeing with the urgency of, of trying to find affordable housing for all the spectrums of the folks that we have in Lakewood. And not just get housing built, but get housing built, uh, in the full range of, of things to do that.
Good points, Representative Levitt.
Mayor, I, I would echo Councilmember, I don't know if it's called Rep. Branstadter's comments, but I, I think Lhasa does incredible work and has been for a very long time for the city of Lakewood and, and happy to support the request. I think just figuring out, you know, what the five hundred thousand, you know, why five hundred thousand? How much the city is going to put in? Is that the differential between what they need? Is that the last stretch or is that a part of? And I just think, you know, when the application comes forward, just clarifying that would be helpful, but very supportive. I know you want to move on to, to the Western State Policing Program as I'm looking through the program. But, um, but just think, you know, clarifying that will be really important because again, I think there's a difference between the House and the Senate in terms of how many dollars are available on the capital side. And I know that, um, there will be many capital projects coming forward from Pierce County and from within Pierce County on housing. Um, and the city of Lakewood will have one, but there are many others, as the Pierce County delegation considers. Thank you.
We will certainly do that. I, I think, yes, Senator.
Is supportive housing? By supportive housing, I mean, are we, when people are housed here, are they receiving mental health services as well? Are there help, you know?
I don't think.
There is a model out there of housing, which is supportive housing, which is an effort to get at the homeless and the mental health problems around homeless folks. And, uh, I just heard just to kind of think of that, that kind of housing. Because I think supportive housing is a, is a model that works. And I just, uh, you know, I don't know Lhasa myself, sounds like some of my colleagues too. But I'm very willing to meet. This is not a huge ask, okay? In fact, you know, I'm sure we'll be dropping more dollars into the, uh, Housing Trust Fund. Uh, we'll probably be putting more dollars into any number of supportive housing initiatives, et cetera. Yeah, because I know this is going to be a huge priority. Governor's made it his priority. Uh, it just sounds to me like we're going to have quite a conversation in Olympia about housing.
Well, and we knew that would be the case. And I think, uh, you know, without stating the mathematical precision, I think we were looking for something that was meaningful, but doable.
Meaningful, I think it's.
Meaningful, yeah, meaningful but doable.
I often use the county median wage and as the twelve ninety-five comes out of the county median wage uh, calculation, which I have reservations about. Because it doesn't really direct the doesn't, if the median wage brings you all up Lakewood, wealthier areas of Pierce County, together with the low-income areas, and we get a median wage. And that median wage may not fit all, all communities in Pierce County.
Absolutely.
And so I think we need to be cautious about using the word medium average or affordability here. I think a problem with homelessness is, is that problem of affordability still.
Very true. And we thank you for your consideration of this. We'll look into the Tyler Square model and dig into some of the financing tools that they use for that and, and how they put that together. And we'll also get the information back to you, Representative Levitt, on the method to the madness. We didn't want it to be too low. We didn't want it to be too high. So as, as they say, the, the porch hopefully is just right at five hundred thousand, but we'll see. Next is a significant topic for all of us, and that is public safety. And Councilmember Branstadter will kind of lead us into the topic, which is, as we all know, uh, one with many dimensions. Mr. Branstadter?
You know, while public safety is, 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 is on our list of one of our top priorities, it's, it's the one that doesn't have a one-page summary because we don't really have a specific ask of what we're looking to do. But, but this is a topic that is, uh, we think is of mutual importance. Uh, the legislature certainly has done a lot of public safety policy work and things, um, in the past two years. And we really en- envision and hope that there will be some significant work around public safety going forward. At the city level, public safety is sort of a priority every year. Sixty-seven percent of our city's budget, the general fund budget, goes to public safety-related items, not just police, but, um, but, 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 but courts and, and services and things to do that impact public safety. And we're looking to do that. And so as you're doing your work, we wanted you to ask you to really stay in conversation with us about, because I think if we've seen anything in the past two years is that, uh, public safety policy decisions need to constantly be reviewed to make sure that they're having the intended results or, or being able to be adjusted, uh, if, if they're not. And there were, um, a number of areas that we just sort of wanted to emphasize to you that we'd like you to gi- give some attention to and that we'd like to be a part of a conversation, uh, uh, around. Um, I, I think that the, the first has to do with the possession of controlled substances um, and, and the status of how that is, is handled for, for, for folk. You, you know, there's an interim law that's, you've going to have to replace or extend or something this term because it only runs until next July. Um, but that, uh, it's, it didn't come with a whole lot of policy guidance that's clearly understandable and usable um, like courts and, 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 and police departments and, and, and and even social service providers to be able to go and do that. It has a, uh, a tiered thing of where before we, you go to, to, to charging anyone, there would be two instances of where you came in contact with law enforcement, where you would be referred but to, uh, to, to, to assistance. But we're not quite sure that we have, when we refer people, that that assistance is really there. That, 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 that the funding is really robust enough to make that uh, uh, workable for a significant number of, of, of people. Um, yeah, also anecdotally, you know, we're having a little trouble, uh, looking at the two instances, and then you can be charged in an area like Pierce County where there are multiple jurisdictions, and, but there's no central way to decide when, have, have you reached two or have you reached uh, three or have you reached thirteen, but they're just spread out, okay? To do that, I think that 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 maybe just looking at whether, even whether that's, that's, that's a good system to do that and try to find some data about how many people who get a referral at a contact are actually moving through and following through and having some impact, uh, upon them. There's a real concern in the public because, um, many times when particularly the victims of property crimes, um, that the, the feedback that comes to them is, well, we've figured it out and what it was. But then the person was needing to buy controlled substances was their motivation for doing that, okay? And we've made a referral to them. That's a little bit difficult sometimes in the community to understand. Yet at the same time, I think the community is well aware of people whose drug use is not abated, um, are dying. And we've got an interest in trying to find some way to motivate them to, to get the help that will actually save their life. Um, you know, and, 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 and as another part of it, because they're they're victims of, of, of the problem as well. So, you know, we, we really ask you to, to take, uh, take a look at that and, and, and really look for some things that'll work. Uh, and that the, the push, the encouragement to get help is accompanied by something that makes it maybe a little bit less if you want to. And also, uh, that, that when a person does want to go there, that it's there for them to find when they want to do it. Like I said, we don't have a solution that we're advocating to you. Um, but we're certainly, as you work through that, we're willing to be a part of the discussions. If you have some, what do you think? Type questions that you want, want to ask us, we're, we're looking to do that. The second area, the, in, in, yeah.
I think it's going to be a major conversation in Olympia. The Blake decision, of course, came down from the courts about possession. And the issue here, you know, we all know what's been going on in the homeless encampments. I mean, I don't need to talk much about that. The intersection of drug use and homelessness has been a major problem. And I just know that somehow you're, you're suggesting, you know, that like the, some of the thinking around Blake has been, you know, we need to treatment. You know, we need to have access to treatment for people. But do we have the facilities for that treatment in, in all communities? I mean, we all know that there's a real, uh, problem in behavioral health just in having counselors and people to work with people. And so I, I know Blake is going to be on the agenda of Olympia. Um, it's been told in our caucus at least that Blake will probably be one of the major, the major issues of the session for us. Because there, we did take some efforts to address Blake. Uh, there was a lot of criticism of some of what you touched upon here. And I think that we'll be working on Blake in Olympia. Uh, that's, I'm not on the Law and Justice Committee. But, uh, and so I don't know if any of us here are, but Blake will probably be a major conversation in Olympia. And I will, we'll look forward to working with Shelley and others here to get this right. I, I, you know, the intersection of homelessness with, with, with drug problems is so obvious that, uh, that we need to figure out how to manage this better. Uh, you know, I don't think this legislature has an appetite to do what Oregon did in expanding the, the scope of, of, of drug use. But I do believe that, uh, that, that the Blake issue will be looked at very carefully.
I can just add some comments that I don't mind. I just want to make sure that we are not communicating that homeless is synonymous with drug use.
It is.
There are a lot of people who are homeless.
But it's a partner that's there.
I understand. Let me, I need to make sand, that's on the record himself. Okay, because I was homeless once myself and I'm not a drug abuser. So there are lots of families out there with children, individuals who are homeless but are not in the drug addiction phase, whether they be in encampments or not. So I think this is more of a wider scope. And it's not the first time we've had, uh, issues with substance abuse. Let's not forget that Stanaway used to be the meth capital. And this is before this big crises of homelessness hit. So this was in our community before we got to this place. Unfortunately, we weren't quick enough, as you were saying, council member, to put things in place to adequately address this. So now we're here. So it's really a wide array of people who are going to need these services.
Yeah, I think that the second public safety area that we really like.
Before you get to number two, Mr. Anderson had a point on number one, I think.
Yeah, I I I would I agree with you, Representative. The but as Senator Conway has pointed out, you know, there is this visible homelessness that is very closely tied to drugs and is very closely tied to rise of property crimes and stolen cars and speeding and speeding away in stolen cars, using them as battering rams. We just had another incident here. And a lot of that has been exacerbated by Blake. And assume you have the treatment, everybody agrees, we need more mental health treatment, we need more drug treatment. But there are two ways that you get people to treatment, persuasion and coercion. And if you've ever had anybody in your family who had a drug problem or an alcohol problem, you know that persuasion does not work very well. It takes time, it takes personal contact, and even then, after many attempts, it it fails as often as it's successful. We have two methods under the law to bring people into treatment. One is through the court system in criminal sense, drug courts, veterans courts, mental health courts. But they have to be charged with something to get in the system. And so if you let them walk, they're not going to get there. The second one is through the involuntary treatment act. We had an agreement, I call it a deal with the devil politically forty plus years ago, where civil libertarians said, we got to let everybody go unless they're going to be an immediate threat to themselves or others are going to kill somebody or themselves. And the conservatives said, we can save a lot of money if we did that. And so everybody said, open the floodgates. And we're not going to, we're not going to pay for mental health treatment anymore. We're going to let people wander around the streets and dine under blue tarps. So that also needs to be addressed. So we have to have a way that families can get their loved ones into mental health treatment on an involuntary basis, or if we have you know, that we have our behavioral health contact team. I think we're the first in the county uh where we send mental health professionals out with police officers and and go out, reach out to people in the street, and you have somebody living under a tarp, sitting on a bench every day. They know Mitch. Mitch is out there for a couple of years. He needs to be in where he could be stabilized. He can have somebody make sure he has his meds, he can be treated, but but he isn't going to kill anybody in the next five minutes, so they can't do anything. So we have to have coercion. It doesn't have to be punitive coercion. It can be coercion that is helpful. But we don't have it either in mental health arena or in the criminal arena under under present configuration of the law because of Blake. So we need to have, we need to have a way. We need to have a way to get the horse to the drinking thumb, so.
That's exactly right, or it's not going to change.
I think that in the Blake, the chair of the chair of the committee is is basically looking at that issue very closely because they're they're looking at lesser charges like misdemeanors as a way of trying to get to stick into this, as you call it, or because just saying you need the treatment doesn't necessarily work. And so I we'll see what happens. I mean, this is this is a problem of our times, and I don't think anyone has a solution to it.
Mayor, ju- just a comment. Blake is one thing, and and we definitely need to address that, and I don't disagree. And some of the crimes are a result of COVID and the pandemic and people suffering and being challenged and less their jobs, and it has nothing to do with drugs or alcohol or abuse, but has everything to do with financial insecurity that is plaguing our community. So it's a comment, just just to comment on on what the former mayor said, I just just don't want to just, I want to distinguish between those who are in severe poverty, who are making choices that we wish they wouldn't make as a result of that, um, over the last couple of years, and a separate issue of Blake, which we do need to address legislatively, which is which is a distinction in and of itself. So just want to make that comment. Thank you.
No, I appreciate that. Before I go to you, Mr. Boki, I I think that's very true. I think the thing that that I have physically seen that differs is those folks that have had impact financially from COVID, they're pretty willing to avail themselves of services if they're available. They're the ones that our contact team will go out and and help and refer to services, and and they'll accept the help because they need it and they want it and they're willing to do it. The the others that are challenged without the the positive coercion that Councilmember Anderson talks about are are the ones that I think are pleased to form a grapples with. And here's an example. I went out on a ride along. I've done a couple in the last month. I did one that was a retail emphasis patrol staked out at Safeway. Between five and ten o'clock at night, through the assistance of the store security and our plainclothes officers, they arrested twelve individuals. I went out on each one, got out of the car, observed our professional officers, talked to the folks and say, what what's going on here? Almost to a T, I'd say ten of the twelve were all drug related. Every one of them admitted that they had had their last hit or whatever within the last couple of hours earlier during the day. They talked about how much it it costs to fund their habit daily. And that was the reason, in many cases, that they were stealing. So we charged them with a misdemeanor. And they said, are you really going to take us to jail? It's like, yeah, we're booking you in this quality jail. But I don't know what happens after the fact, right, whether they can get into the system to get services. And I know this is just one anecdotal story, but it's one that I experienced. And so I hear what you say, but there's also that other side of that coin. We've got to figure out a way as a as a community of leaders to help these people help themselves better. It really is. And it's the property crimes like that that are consistent that are impacting not just the individuals and the people who are the victims of the crimes, but the community, because now we've got residents in this community that that say, I don't feel comfortable sending my my spouse or my children to Safeway to shop. They're not comfortable being in the parking lot because of the activity that seems to be more chronic. So it has a spillover effect that we have to get our hands on somehow as a community of leaders. Mr. Boki.
I just want to ask a question about the opioid settlement monies. The the first round, I think, with the the wholesalers or whatever has closed, we've gotten some word as to what we might, we think we might be getting over the next. I guess it's a payout over seventeen years, so it's certainly not a windfall for us. And so we're looking more at pooling our resources with the county and other cities to try to come up with some kind of different programs. Have you at at your level had any discussions about how you might handle those opioid monies coming to the state? And there'll be more, and there'll be more. It's understanding there's about three rounds.
I cannot, I cannot answer the question, you know, it'll be probably part of the budget. Usually those discussions get enrolled in the operating budget. And so there'll probably be some conversation there. I'm not sure if the distribution, how the lawsuit impacts the distribution. Maybe the lawsuit laid out how it'd be distributed between into cities and counties. I don't know. My sense of that, I know what the lawsuit you're talking about is is, you know, there was, but really, it really gets into the budget and in conversation, conversations on the budget. And the lawsuit probably is dictated, I would assume that some of the dollars that come to Washington State will be directed to cities and counties because I assume it's based on that that issue. I can't believe the lawsuit would just leave it open and give the money to the states.
The the cities and counties are getting some, and I think that there is a formula based upon, and it's actually, I think it's based upon, I don't know if it's deaths or, you know, overdoses or whatever. And and there are strings attached, and like I say, it is paid out over seventeen years, so it's not a windfall clearly for a city the size of Lakewood. That's why we're probably going to be involved with the at the county level. They're creating a committee of some sort, and I can't remember the committee's name that is is part of the settlement you have to join that kind of, I guess, audits the, for lack of a better word, how the expenditures are being made. So we'll have some opportunities if we pool that money to maybe begin to create some programs. But I think the state, the way I understand on this first round, they got half. The local government's got the other half. So what the state does, it decides to do, is is really important, right? And so but I don't know, I've 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 now hit the the level of all the detail I know of the lawsuit right there, so.
Money could be funneled into treatment programs too on the state level, you know, usually that's what happens. I don't think the state would use it more to pay for salaries. I think they probably use the dollars for treatment, I hope.
Well, we hope so. I I think, as you mentioned, Representative Morgan, the the issue a few years back was meth, and now it's fentanyl and heroin. So when we caught one of these gentlemen at the Safeway store, the the price of fentanyl on the street, eighty nine cents a pill. It's so accessible and so addictive for these young people. It's just really, really sad.
There probably going to be some action on fentanyl.
Mr. Branson.
Hey, I can try to wrap up this big topic here. I that it's the holidays, but I can find a big bow, but I but I I I think that one other area we just would want to encourage you to 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 look at and 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 make some adjustments has to do with vehicle pursuits by police. The current vehicle pursuit policy has a very small list of crimes, requires probable cause. And the result of that has been that for many, many other crimes, from shoplifting to stolen stealing cars to other things, people understand that the the rules don't allow the police to pursue them as long as they can get in, get in a car and get moving. And it's, we have lots of anecdotal evidence of police officers and police cars being rammed and damaged by people who are just doing that to get away. And the fact that then the people that speed off, even though police follow the law and they don't, they they don't pursue them, they continue to drive as if they are being pursued. And they injure and damage then some other people down the road being able to go and do that. And it's, so in terms of both looking at the scope of offenses for which a pursuit would be allowed, you know, looking at 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 reasonable reasonable belief as opposed to probable cause to be able to go and do that. I think that, you know, it'd be in our police department, we have had strong pursuit rules that our officers have to comply with to get permission to actually pursue someone even before this this change in the law, to be able to go and do that. But it's now, it's it it's 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 created an unsafe situation for the public and for the police officers, and quite frankly, for the people who are involved in these crimes to include even people with traffic offenses and 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 DUIs. On a more positive note, I I I I guess I would like to highlight that in in, you know, in in two thousand and fifteen, Lakewood was the first city in the state to begin to having the behavioral health contact teams where we put behavioral health professional in a car with a police officer and began the contacting folks that are out there and that when the police came in contact with someone where they seemed to be having a a a mental health issue, that there was someone there with both the legal authority and and the knowledge to be able to actually help them and be actually begin, become the beginning of a of a of a of a rec to do that. That's really worked out very well for us, particularly with the with the with the folks who were the behavioral health is their primary thing that they needed to get engaged with 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 some help to do that. It's like a lot of things, sometimes you got to contact them two or three times before they'll accept the fact that you're really there to help. But it but it's worked well. I know the program has been emulated by a good number of departments around the state, but we would encourage you to provide some funding so that it can become even more of a prevalent strategy in in Washington State because it's something that works. And we and we're certainly, if you have anyone that needs to talk about why it's a good idea, we're 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 glad to be a resource to to beat that drum.
Mayor, thank you. I'm Councilwoman Branson. I'm a big fan of the program that that the city of Lakewood has with the police department. And there was a grant program that passed twenty nineteen and that allows our local police departments to apply for dollars for diversion programs. And I'm wondering if the city of Lakewood's police department has applied for those dollars. I know they ran out. And so this past year, I mean, there was such a demand that that the the dollars associated wasn't sufficient. So in in twenty twenty two in the session, an additional million dollars was added to that grant program. And so I would encourage the city of Lakewood and the police department to see if they might be eligible and to access those dollars. I know one city who I think got some dollars recently, but or rather, one town, excuse me. But I I think it's it's worth exploring to to access some state dollars, as as you've talked about, to to get access to those grant dollars because there is definitely a need, and that diversion dollars through WASPIC is is the one who's overseeing, and it's a great program, and many, many local police department jurisdictions have tapped in to the point where we needed to add more dollars. So it's a great program.
Yeah, well, I I again, I would say thank you for for that, and we're we're aware of those, and it's and while our city manager would take any money that you put in his hand, we're not, we're not really asking for money for ourselves. We're asking you to continue in that regard, and it may be even more robustly so that more departments to do that because I I think the 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 problem is 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 broad. And it's so it's a good idea that we're we're bringing to you, but it it does take money to get started. And it takes money not only for the city, but it takes money to train enough mental health professionals to be able to work in that environment to be able to go and do that. You know, you you can't just take go over to Western State and grab a staff member and put them in a police car. Doesn't work that way.
The other possible pool of funds that might be worth looking into is the ninety eight dollars. No, but but I, we were just at a meeting at South Sound nine one one with a a bunch of providers, from firefighters to local police departments, Chief Sarr was also there. I'm talking about ninety eight potential dollars to assist in in some of this diversion work, so I would highly recommend wherever you can access those, those potential dollars would be well worth it. Thank you.
I was just going to say we have a firefighter here.
Rep. Morgan, sorry, not Robyn Oskan. Somebody on the side was with me.
Mental health people also in firefighting as well, because they're the ones often who come into the domestic violence situations and, you know, it's it's a great idea, and I think we need to do more of it. How we fund it is obviously a big issue here because historically. is obviously a big issue here because historically cities have used their own funding sources for their police departments and, uh, you know, the state has not been actively involved in that funding of policing and firefighting for that matter.
Yeah, thanks. And it's going to be all, all hands on deck approach. Um, not only does your program with Lake of Police work very effectively, um, but also, you know, my, someone, um, that needs help in the space might not necessarily interact with police or might not necessarily interact with the fire department. So part of the goal, what we're trying to do with the implementation of nine-eight-eight is having additional resources to have people go out and respond in the field. So that way, um, because it's not a model. Um, you know, everybody's different. We want to be able to make sure that nobody slips through the cracks and plug people in appropriately where, where they need to go. Uh, to include working with other agencies that might not necessarily traditionally have had a, a, a role to play in providing these kinds of services. Uh, had a meeting with Pierce Transit, uh, I don't know, a while ago, and this is something that they're looking at getting involved in as well. Because somebody that rides the transit system again, might not necessarily have to interact with law enforcement or fire or EMS. So, um, you know, it's going to be a, a, a long-term, uh, something that we're going to be working on in the long term and we're going to continue to perfect. But I think everybody realizes the need and we're going to try to work collaboratively to make sure that, again, people get plugged in where they need to get plugged in.
And I would add for, uh, Spanaway, Parkland, South Part area, I've been speaking with Central Fire out that way, and their biggest thing, and we might have come to a collaborative effort, is using a faith-based community. Um, because that's what we're surrounded with there. So I think what the House is really trying to say is that it's not going to be one bucket that we're going to be able to draw from. It's, it's just too large. And we really would love for everybody in our communities to collaborate together, whether that be city, it was with city and just within our communities too. There's a wealth of resources of people in our communities that we're, we're not utilizing. You know, uh, faith-based churches have vans that are just sitting there, and that was the fire department's biggest issue out of Spanaways, no transportation.
Interesting.
For those that don't need the contract, right? They just need to get from point A to point B, yet they're using fire and police to do that. So we're looking at, can we, uh, gather in some community folks like, uh, representing Bronoski was saying.
Even Pierce Transit.
Right.
Has some ability with their van.
Even Uber and Lyft, we are, they, we have some contracts already.
That's right.
Right, with Uber and Lyft to do some of these transports.
Good point.
And I guess, and I guess the last public safety thing that works, that I'd encourage you to look to see, make sure it's prevalent statewide, is that first responders have Narcan. You know, that, uh, both on the fire and, 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 and the police side of a lot of, I would hear a lot of anecdotal stories of lives have been saved. But not everybody has.
Right. Well, thank you, Mr. Branser.
The school districts are required to have it now, based on the law that we passed a couple of years ago, that every school district has to have Narcan on site, um, for that particular reason. But I agree, expanding is great.
Very good. Well, we don't want to hold you too long, so we want to expeditiously go through the next few. Uh, the next one is a fairly short one, uh, that Councilmember Bill can give us a brief overview, and that's just the Western State Hospital Partnership Program. I don't say just because it's really important. The budget allocates six hundred and twenty-one thousand to the program and we depreciate the priority for that funding. Again, it's critical and necessary, especially since there, as you know, on the grow, uh, through the funding that you provided to rebuild Western State Hospitals. So it's a community partnership that's important. Councilmember Bill.
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll just go over this briefly. So the city has operated the Community Partnership Program at Western State Hospital since two thousand and seven. And the program, it's a single point of contact for Lakewood PD and for the hospital to call so they can facilitate a stronger relationship between the hospital staff, police and community. And because of this program, um, there's a collective commitment to the consistency as it relates to criminal cases, human resource information, investigations, emergency managements and security. And so this program provides the investigative services for the incidents on campus. And LPD officers, uh, participate in routine meetings with the hospital staff. So we do know that there has been some challenges, which I believe have been right-sized with PD staffing. That's been corrected. Um, you know, we've had a lot of like in twenty twenty-one, the Lakewood PD, like many other police agencies across the nation, has lost several officers, um, due primarily to retirements and had to temporarily pause the program. But we did not bill the services. We did not provide. And so the investigative portion of the services has been reinstated and we are working with the hospital to meet their needs. One of the biggest things that we're looking for, uh, besides the, um, the current state budget allocation of the six hundred and twenty-one thousand is looking at some new language that we want to change in the, it says, changes to the budget proviso language. So the goal with the new language is to describe the services provided through the program rather than linking it to specific positions. So instead of saying like an investigator or a neighborhood police officer, we would talk about the services itself that were being offered, gives it a broader, um, applicability to it. So, because currently the old language, it's just not, um, it's from a service model from two thousand and seven. And it unnecessarily limits the coordination that could occur and it's just not applicable. So that is basically it for the Western State Hospital Community Partnership Program as far as what we're looking for, um, moving forward.
Mayor Pollard, large things, please. All done to the state hospital.
Yes.
And, and you mentioned Councilmember Bell that the dollars haven't been spent in twenty twenty-one, but in the previous three years, say twenty seventeen to twenty twenty, were those dollars exhausted each year? Are you aware?
Yes, they were. Thank you.
Very good. Well, next we'll move to SSM. I think Don's next, unless you wanted to comment on this. No. SSM CP priorities for Councilmember Anderson. Anybody else have?
I'm next.
She said, oh. Did I, I skipped you? Well, Councilmember.
You were on the next page of geographic equity and the discharge from state facilities.
Yeah, and just for that, I'm going to take all the time, keep these people from their evenings. I'm going to start out with a thank you. Um, I know that the governor has made it a priority to move us toward a more community based behavioral health system and, and legislature has really taken up that charge. That is not an easy thing to do, especially not without gobs and gobs of money to take us from one, one, uh, hospital on the western side of the state and one hospital on the eastern side of the state and move us into a more community based system. And many of you know, I sit on the state's sex offender policy board, uh, which was created in, in two thousand and eight to create a more, um, coordinated response around, uh, sex offender release and some other policies. And so I've, I've had, um, an up close and personal, uh, look at, at this, this thing in front of you called geographic equity and discharge from state facilities. And those of you who have, have been here for a few years, Senator Conway, there are, um, this is, this will be nothing new. Most, most of this will be nothing new. And so, um, one of the things here in Lakewood is that we have, um, is that individuals are discharged from state facilities into less restrictive alternatives such as adult family homes at a, at a higher rate in Lakewood than they are in other, any other community in the state. And we have, um, we've worked with every delegation for ten, twenty years. This long predates me. And we have not been able to get any traction on that. We're, we're not really here to, to talk and beg and plead about that tonight, although we will, we would happily talk your, talk your ear off. I'm, I'm just not sure what it is that we can, what can we collectively do to move that forward? And we would love to hear your, your thoughts and your, um, creative ideas. We are, uh, we stand ready. I've, I've, uh, I'm fairly new to the council and so I, I come in with, uh, uh, fresh ideas um, and a little bit of a, a perhaps unjaded look at things. And so like, we can do this, of course we can. Um, and I, so it's, it's, it's a pretty big deal and a, and a pretty, um, comprehensive thing that, that needs to be tackled. So, so I'll throw that out there. Uh, the second thing is, uh, is a more recent occurrence for us and, and individuals, some individuals who are, uh, released from facilities and placed in these less restrictive alternatives. They don't have the services and the staffing in these, uh, adult family homes and some of these other situations such as enhanced service facilities that they need. And in some cases, and you'll see that there's a whole list of examples there of where we're, it's endangering staff, it's endangering the communities. And there's very little that we as a city can do about it. And so we're, we're asking for your help. And so under the proposed solutions section, there are four items. I'd like to focus on numbers two and three. And those both call for legislation. And the number two is legislation that would institute um, fair share policies for discharge planning from state hospitals, state hospitals and secure community transition facilities in particular. Um, many of you are familiar with Senate Bill fifty-one sixty-three, um, but we, we discovered that that only applies to the special commitment center out on McNeil Island. It doesn't apply to anybody coming out of Western State or, or other facilities. And so, um, that's, that's a, we're hoping a cleanup issue that, that can take place. And the sex offender policy board is, is taking that up and there, um, we were working on a couple of our reports that are due to the legislature here in next month. And that is one of the recommendations that that be broadened. I believe that that was the intent of the, of fifty-one sixty-three, but it didn't come through in translation. So that is one of the things that we wanted to ask for. Um, number three is legislation that would, uh, call for disclosure of publicly accessible and relevant criminal history to the service providers during the discharge planning process. If you're at all familiar with how folks are discharged, it is, is it a fair, it's a fairly comprehensive process and, and covers a lot of ground. Um, but we've discovered that, uh, in some cases, it may not be disclosed that, that these are folks with special issues and there are, there are the staffing requirements that would be helpful in those particular areas. And so maybe a simple disclosure might help find a better housing solution. One of the reasons that Lakewood has so many of these, uh, discharge placements is that we have the housing. A lot of housing has sprung up, um, particularly in my neighborhood in, in Oak Brook. And because of the proximity of, of Western State and, and McNeil Island. Um, what I find fascinating is that the services are not around here. There are some services here, yes, but we've had many instances of, of folks who are released and they can find housing here in Lakewood, but they've got treatment in Mason County. They've got treatment in Bellevue and they're fighting that traffic constantly to drive to the services that they need. Um, in my time on the sex offender policy board, we have, we have studied and determined that the common refrain tonight, there aren't enough service providers. They're paid under market. And so one of, uh, one of the options here, uh, I believe is number one is to, is to make sure that we're, uh, properly incentivizing our, our, um, credentialed service providers. Um, and there are some, it's very difficult to gain some of the credentialing. And so looking, looking at the barriers for getting the treatment in all corners of Washington State, not just King County or Pierce County where, where the highest concentrations are. So that, that's it. That's a high level overview. Any questions?
Thank you very much. It's been a horse we've ridden over the last few years, but hopefully we can make some traction in the next.
I guess on the state hospital issue, uh, question I have is, uh, you know, from McNeil Island there, they, they have violent offenders who are placed there because of their threat to communities. So it was easier to get fair share there. The state hospitals, you know, when you're talking about fair share on state hospitals, we're really talking about, we, we're not necessarily, we, we have two units out there. The, the violent offender unit at the state hospital and then the other one, which is not, you know, where, where they're moving more toward, uh, community-based services. And I guess my sense of this is that in that recommendation, I would think you would need to probably limit it to the violent offenders and the, because it's, that makes more sense to me than the state hospital in general. I mean, in other words, a lot of those folks that are being released, some of them don't have families. That's the problem. And they do end up in Pierce County because there isn't a family structure and their effort in the, as we know, at the state hospital is they're trying to move people into community settings. Of course, the souls are only in the process of being developed. So we end up placing them where? In adult family homes. I understand that. And I don't think we need to argue about that because that's what's happening. Because adult family homes often become the only place they can go. And, you know, I just, I, as we apply this to state hospitals, I think we need to refine our thinking a little bit about the type of people we're referring, we're talking about here. Fair share on a state hospital. Uh, I mean, it makes sense, but you know, I don't know if we can sell that in Olympia. I mean, we could sell something dealing with, I, I do believe that when there's been a lot of stories about violent folks who've been placed in adult family homes who should never have been placed there because they don't have the services nor the staffing to take care of them. And, and I, I, but I just wonder if the breadth of your proposal for state hospital makes sense.
Because we dig into the details of it, we'll make sure that it, that it is as narrow as possible.
Yeah. I, I just, just, you know, we've never applied it to the state hospitals for sure. We really only applied it to what the people were out there at McNeil Island because we knew that of course, we were hoping that they'd be returned to their county of offense, you know, where they committed their original acts. But, uh, I just wonder on the state hospital, how we would do that. It's an interesting idea. But it's, uh, you know, can we tell the state, I, I've been interested in talking with DSHS about the number of adult family homes and the need to spread them around the state. And that's the conversation that we need to have with DSHS about the licensing of, of adult family homes and the effort here. Cause it's in their interest that that number of adult family homes shouldn't be located all in one community. Adult family homes should be spread around the state ideally because that means people are closer to their homes, the people who need those. And, uh, I just wonder if it might be more profitable in having a conversation with DSHS about trying to encourage the adult family home business to look at broader, you know, look, look at expanding the number of adult family homes. There are obviously there are good reasons why we have adult family homes. I think we all know that. And, uh, but, uh, the thing is that they shouldn't be all located in one community. And they should be spread throughout the state for very good reasons. Because if we are releasing people from state hospitals and, and adult family homes are the primary location where they're locating them, doesn't it make sense that they be spread across the state? And that goes back to your, your issue. But I don't know, a fair share on a state hospital.
Intensity for licensure might be helpful. Mr. Anderson.
Yeah, I, I think definitionally it's, it's a problem, but the, the underlying problem is that, while folks coming from McNeil Island are defined as, you know, they were violent offenders. They're sex offenders, registered sex offenders. They've been convicted of something and they're held on a civil commitment after that conviction. The folks we're talking about that they're the problem have never been convicted. They, their felony flips. They come to the forensic unit at Western State Hospital. They're, they aren't, uh, they're found incompetent to stand trial. And at some point, it, where there's a judgment call made by DSHS, they're moved to the civil side. Say, okay, they aren't a danger to the population that they're in, we will move them to the civil side. Then there's tremendous pressure, the state level, to move anyone who can be moved to less restrictive circumstances. So you get someone who may be an ax murderer and twenty years later, And 20 years later, they are released into the community to go to an adult family home. Perhaps they have some physical disability. And we've had instances where they've killed their roommates at the adult family home. They still have those valiant tendencies. The judgment call was wrong. And so we have a disproportionate number of those folks here who entered through the criminal system but weren't convicted. And then are pushed out into, into, through the civil side into the community. It, it's not as, it's not, you know, Aunt Bessie who didn't take her medication for being bipolar. These are people that come through the violent offender entry point, but don't have a criminal conviction. So DSHS is very adamant that they are not subject to any, any laws regarding the release of offenders because they haven't been convicted. So they don't think. Yeah, well, I, I, I would, I would put the money I have in my wallet on the table and say that, 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 uh, some of these offenses over at Hosmer and the, uh, in the last six months, were people just in that category. Yeah.
The reality is twenty-ninth has always dealt with this problem. This, this is not new for us. So when they get pushed out of Lakewood, they get pushed into the twenty-ninth, right? We definitely don't have any services at all. We don't even have transportation adequately enough to get people to any type of resources. So yes, this is something we do need to look at, but I would hope that, um, cause I remember when Lakewood was not a city, right? We're all one part of the county. That we are working together, that we're not pushing them out of one city into another area. If they get pushed to the twenty-ninth, we can't handle it at all. And that, uh, starts in, uh, encroaching on my community here and my kids, my neighborhood, right? So how do we work together to ensure we're not pushing them, but we're actually servicing?
This isn't intended to be the whack-a-mole where, you know, you're, you're pushing them over the, the next ballot. We're talking about sending people back to Eastern Washington or Mason County and making sure that their community-based services where they're going and where they're going is where they came from. So that, that.
Right, exactly. As much as possible, because in some cases, the, the fence was so egregious in their county of origin that they can't go back to the county of origin because the victims are, are still there. And so there's, yeah, I know, yeah. There, there, there are a lot of moving parts and it, it is a complex, uh, complex decision to, to do the discharge. But thank you for listening.
Thank you. And our, our last one is Councilmember Anderson on SSMCP priorities. We can do it briefly and then we'll just open it, conclude it with questions for the delegation.
Yes, as many of you know, the city of Lakewood was one of the founders of South Sound Military Community Partnerships, dealing with, uh, both the positive and, uh, more challenging impacts of being the host community to the fourth largest military base in the world. Fifty thousand plus jobs, fifteen billion dollars a year in direct impact. It's kind of the economic gorilla in the South Sound. And with that comes the issues that we have to deal with. We have four things on our policy agenda. I'm not going to go into great detail on, except for one. But you've been dealing with occupational licensing for spouses. Some of those mental health professionals can come from military spouses who come to our state if they can get licensing. We are asking for some study money for statewide, uh, economic analysis of the military's impact on the state of Washington. That's a pretty modest proposal. But what I want to talk about is the, uh, funding for Clear Zone match through the DCCA. I love all the acronyms. We have been working for years and finally have reached a degree of success on clearing out the North Clear Zone. Off the end of the runway in McCord, there is FAA and military mandated Clear Zone three thousand by three thousand feet. Now followed by air corridor, uh, air APZ one and two, which are restricted zoning areas. Unfortunately, there were build outs into the, uh, McCord North Clear Zone area that need to be, uh, for safety purposes and operational purposes. They're off the base, but they need to be mitigated. We've reached an agreement with, got a commitment from the Department of Defense and the Air Force to spend eighty million dollars over, of their money over up to 20-year period to pick away at this on, uh, market-based voluntary sales. This isn't a condemnation thing. That requires a 20% match. The county's put in a little money. We've put in a lot of time at the city of Lakewood. Some of these properties aren't even in the city of Lakewood. But we've been coordinating it through SSMCP. And so Senator Conway, you know, you've worked on the, the DCCA, uh, this defense, uh, community compatibility account. It's a good bucket. It's good purposes, but there's something has to go in the bucket to make it useful. And so, uh, what we're asking is that you fund the Department of Commerce's project list, which would make, uh, nine hundred thousand dollars available for match. And we could move to the next phase of a major property. We have acquired, uh, the, uh, tactical tailor property off the end of the runway. It's dead center, uh, right on the line. So it, it's, it was the number one, uh, target. And, uh, we have cobbled a lot of things together to get there. This DCCA, together with the Air Force's commitment, uh, can make it happen. This is a long-term deal. It's going to take another dozen years at least. But we're chipping away at it. It's a, it's a public safety issue. It's an operational issue. It's the, as far as, you know, nobody's going to close, uh, JBLM, but it impacts the, it, it impacts the type of missions that they can have in the future too. And, you know, it's, it's, it's basically the area between, or a good deal of the, the area between a hundred and 12th street and the freeway off the end of the runway. So.
Thank you, Representative Lovett.
It feels weird to talk about SSMCP since we just had the elected officials breakfast to ask you questions on this priority list. I'm not sure City of Lakewood is the right avenue, but since you're raising it as part of a legislative party, um, what concerns me about this list? Um, I don't see housing, I don't see childcare. And every single time I meet with commanders, um, from both the, both the Air Force side and from both sides of JBLM, if you will, they often talk about the impact and concerns of housing and childcare. And so I, I guess I would invite, um, the city of Lakewood to, um, as you think about this policy manual, to focus on those issues. Because again, um, I know it's a prevalent issue for those military families. And military families can't get to work. Occupational licensing is, I fully agree, is a huge issue. And I hope that we address it this upcoming session. Um, and housing and childcare and childcare in particular, whether, um, I've done tours of, of Bangor and the Naval Side, but also met with commanders at JBLM. Have talked to folks at Fairchild and Spokane. Um, it's prevalent across, and I don't see it listed at all on this list. So that would be a concern of mine, um, to address that I hope that you're also focusing on from a, a human services perspective. Because without those two, and I live in a cul-de-sac with three military families. They're probably, I haven't counted all the houses in our cul-de-sac in my tent. Um, and a third about our, our military families who all work at JBLM. Um, and they tell me about, um, you know, the folks that they're dealing with, but we also hear it from commanders. So I guess I would just ask, I'm kind of asking SSMCP, not City of Lakewood, which is why it's a weird request. Um, but it concerns me that it's not on this list when that is their top priority. Licensing, childcare, housing, and two of the three are not listed here. Thank you.
Yeah, those, those are SSMCP's top priorities. And we've been dealing through SSMCP on those. Housing is housing. I mean, it's a, a broader issue. On the, uh, I can tell you, I, I've fairly recently joined the, the Board Nationally of the, uh, Association Defense Communities. One of the SSMCC's staff members, Maria Tovin, was the panel leader at an eight-hundred-person meeting in Phoenix on childcare and what's been happening here. So SSMCP is actually being one of the innovators, uh, as far as, as moving that issue forward. Yes, but yes, Charlie, yes. One thing that has happened as a result of SSMCP and others working through ADC on the childcare issue is that the Defense Department has loosened up on their, uh, requirements for reimbursements on childcare. They were requiring a national certification, which is expensive. It isn't required by the state of Washington, so people don't have it. And, uh, they have a lesson for that, or loosened up on that requirement and are now paying people who are state certified. So, uh, the, the lack of providers is still a big issue, but at least if you find one, they can get paid easier.
Shelley, um, I'm glad you brought that up about the federal government is addressing the housing piece, in childcare, but, um, soldiers get paid BAQ. So wanting to know if there's a conversation, did they raise that to match the market value for those who have to move off base post, et cetera? But the other part is, has there been a conversation with HUD? Are there, can they create vouchers for, uh, military personnel that can afford this supposedly affordable housing? So that they can pick up that cost of moving their personnel to our state in helping?
Yeah, uh, I think Congresswoman Strickland's working on the, yeah, Representative Morgan, you know, like Councilmember, alright. Congresswoman Strickland is actually advocating for a hundred percent cost basis on the, uh, BAH, the basic allowance for housing, which would raise it. For some strange reason, the, the survey system that the Department of Defense has for setting BAH is not accurate and it's in a three-year cycle. And it is totally out of whack for our area. So it, it, it underestimates the cost of housing in our area. And it, 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 the last one came out and said it was more than adequate and didn't need an adjustment. It was just flat out statistically wrong.
It, but this problem is deeper than you think. If I have a Section Eight voucher and I lose that Section Eight voucher because the market value wasn't changed at the federal level, how many other families are losing these subsidies that could have been used? And even with our VASH, uh, uh, vouchers as well? How many of them cannot be utilized because the market value is not changed at the HUD level? So I think that's an important component when we're talking about military and housing and even just our constituents as well, when they're on Section Eight vouchers and they can't utilize them. This is contributing to the homelessness and encampments.
We should get some more information on that because when we go back, we can help communicate that voice with our, our delegation back at the federal level too. That would be helpful.
To, to plug, plug in, Mayor, um, two of these items, um, will be discussed at the Joint Military Veterans Affairs Committee. That occurs the week of the fourteenth. Um, so I think it'll be worth watching if you, you don't, at least start the conversation with the Joint Senate and House Committee on both the defense compatibility account and to mirror your point. Or mirror your point, but then also the resiliency and the economic impact of having bases in Washington State and what that means, um, for our community. So both of those will be talked about in a couple of weeks. Thanks.
Fantastic. Any other questions or comments on this point? Yes, don't we all want it? Right, exactly. Got to get back some of that which we send, right? Okay, well, we have appreciated this opportunity to share with you and we want to give you some opportunity to share with us what some of your priorities are that we can be of help with and where interests align.
I, 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 I wanted to know, because I'm, I'm on Commerce and Gaming and you're on the other side of this. Has the city of Lakewood, do you have a moratorium on cannabis?
Not yet. No.
So no moratorium, so you can have licenses come in and stores open retail in the city of Lakewood?
I missed that second part.
Can someone come in and open a retail cannabis?
Oh, I think it's a camping ban. I'm sorry. I, I didn't hear cannabis. Sorry about that. We do have a moratorium, uh, not a moratorium, we just don't have, we don't allow it. The cannabis licensing in Lakewood there. Years ago, when it first came out, there were two licenses that were available for our city. And at the time, when we went to, uh, the public for information, we got back, uh, you know, adamant knows from the school district, uh, meaning the business community, others that came to speak to the city council. And on a four-three vote, we elected not to allow the licenses in Lakewood at the time. Not that it can't come back up, but at the time that was the vote.
Well, as the former chair of the Social Equity and Cannabis Task Force, that's what we're looking at, ensuring that everybody has equal access, right? Um, at this point, we are really looking at cannabis more in a medicinal way. We want to do reefer madness when we're looking at it through recreational senses. But there are lots of medicinal, medicinal uses that people are using that are, uh, adequate. But I guess I would say, I don't know, uh, the cannabis revenue. It does have a separate account and I don't know how much of that goes to the general fund. But, uh, if you're using and pulling money out of the general fund, it means you're using cannabis revenue as well, but not participating.
I don't think we get any.
I'm just throwing that out there.
No, I get you. I don't think we get any revenue from, uh, liquor taxes or cannabis taxes because we don't have a license in the city. So we don't receive any of that revenue presently. And at the time, when we were looking at this liquor, but not cannabis, yes, I'm sorry, the liquor and cannabis control board.
That's where I always, I, I come from the committee and that's where I have an issue too. We don't have a problem with selling liquor and cigarettes and vape, but we have a problem with cannabis. So it, it doesn't match.
One of the things that would be helpful to, you know, on that topic, we can certainly look into and dig into it. But the issue that it's such a cash-based system because of the feds, that in other jurisdictions like Tacoma, we have seen, uh, interesting criminal activities as a result of that. And that was one of the points of issue and contention that led to the decision not to allow it in Lakewood until the feds made some decisions about what they were going to do with the legalization.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be back at that time.
Sounds good. Yeah, right. Senator, I know you wanted to, to have a shorter evening, but you're the, the senior member here. Did you have anything you wanted to impart, some wisdom, some issues?
You know, the only thing that I did talk with, uh, Shelley about is that, you know, we have seen redistricting. And so our size of federal way in the twenty-ninth has gotten a little smaller. And we do have a chunk of, of Lakewood still, and, uh, we want to work with you. And I look forward to working with you. But, uh, you know, our size of, that we once had in the twenty-ninth district is much smaller. And a lot of our focus is now shifting over to East Tacoma. Cause East Tacoma is what we gained. All Salashan, that's now in the twenty-ninth district and it goes all the way up to five twelve Portland Avenue. Well, you know, our, our role is smaller. We're going to be here for you. And I appreciate always the dialogue that we've had. And, uh, you know, I think there are issues that may come up that we need to talk on. And we'll just mention the fact that I keep seeing people think. fact that I keep seeing people think that somehow they can make, uh, the Air Force Base into a regional air, air, air force, uh, regionals, uh, air, airport, there we are. And I just, uh, you know, I know the military would not want that. At least that's my sense. And I do believe that, uh, we're all going to have this issue of this regional airport circulating around us for a while. So I hope that we can kind of come together, maybe Tacoma County as well as City of Lakewood and others who have an issue in that to really, you know, it seemed to me it was odd that this commission was ordered and it's our fault. We, we passed a, we passed some language that said they can, they will not locate another airport or air, state airport in King County, but anywhere else. That seems to me a rather odd way to begin a survey, you know, to say every, every place but here. And I, I frankly, it was our fault because language was passed in our budgets. And, uh, we let it happen, Pierce County delegation, which should have probably recognized that we were a target. And, uh, I don't know the solution to it. I think we hope we, we probably need another airport and where it should be is an open question, but, uh, you know, we all need to probably be working together on that issue a little bit and knowing that right now the county exec is being targeted as being the no vote, right? But I do believe that cities of Pierce County also need to check in on that issue as well.
Very good. Thank you. Representative Brnowski.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to uh, express my gratitude to the city of Lakewood and the city council for our positive working relationship that we've shared over the past couple of years during my tenure and uh, I look forward to continuing that positive working relationship to deliver results, not only to the folks that live in Lakewood, uh, myself included, but, uh, you know, balancing the city's needs with the needs of, you know, our legislative districts and of course, the state of Washington and you know, it's a, a, a really challenging balancing act at times, but I'm committed to working with all of you going forward to make sure that we continue to deliver results for everyone that lives here. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Representative Morgan, do you have anything else to add?
I would just say that I'm open for conversation on this new community that the, the county exec would like to put in the 29. That, that's a very serious conversation that we should be having, especially in terms of infrastructure. We definitely cannot handle that out there at this time. And until we figure out infrastructure, we really can't expand in that type of project. I feel that we would be investing, um, in something that we, uh, will not be able to properly administer.
Uh, in the city's letter of support, we were aligned with your comment about infrastructure and we encourage them to consider ensuring that sewer and other related infrastructure would be in place to service it because long-term you're spot on.
We already don't have infrastructure. We've been asking for it. And so if they're not doing it before, I don't see them doing it in the future.
Understood. Representative Levitt.
I'll, I'll echo Rep Brnowski's comments. Really have appreciated working with you all on a variety of different issues from veterans housing, which I'm hopeful we'll continue to have a conversation. I've had conversations with, um, Councilmember Volkey and Branson, I'd love to have, identify some property in Lakewood to expand veterans housing, um, if we can. Um, in addition to expanding human services, I think Lakewood um, has a significant need and how do we, how do we do that? Um, and then in addition to all of the other issues, certainly that you've talked about, happy to support um, as I can. I have a little bit difference of opinion, um, from my good colleague and Representative Morgan about the community village. Um, and so, um, welcome a conversation about that. Um, I will say that I would be curious, um, because the, um, um, someone mentioned the $1 million that the city has pledged. I'd be curious, um, to find out how many other cities or jurisdictions have pledged and, um, what that may mean if you, um, contribute a million dollars to that project and, and don't have enough for the loss of projects within Lakewood. Um, I, I'll be asking that question, but, um, but it's a dialogue to continue um, as it relates to that and had an opportunity to visit the, both Community Village and Austin, um, with the delegation as well as, um, walk the property out, which it, it stretches the 28th and the 29th, but I agree that um, having sewer, um, in that area will be critical for it to be successful. So anyway, just variety of different projects as well as SSMCP, occupational licensing, I sure hope we, we get there. We'll see.
Well, to conclude, I want to thank you. This has been, I think, a very fruitful discussion. It's great to see you all. I really appreciate, we all appreciate your time tonight. We know we all have families that have homework and other obligations of taking the time out to, uh, exercise our leadership ability and express our collective desire to accomplish solutions for many, many problems is a, a good thing for us to do. So thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Yep.